Everyone, try that again. Good evening, everyone. I got a thumbs up from the sound in the back. I would like to welcome everyone to the City of Elgin, June 6, 2022, session of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Look to staff to call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Valdez?
Present.
Chairman Cox?
Present.
We have a call.
All right, excellent. Next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from May 23, 2022. That was our special session. Is there any discussion? If not, do we have a motion for that approval?
I move to approve.
Second?
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Excellent. All right, next item on the agenda is Item D. It's a chairman's opening statement. It is my opportunity and joy to welcome each of you here tonight. Those of you watching remotely, our City of Elgin staff, and as always, my fellow commissioners, who appreciate the hours that, late hours that many of you are putting in. Again, as I said at the start, this is June. Can't believe we're halfway through the year already. I'm getting a lot of smiles and head shakes on that. I think we're all on the same page, right? But it's good we're all here. We've got three items on the agenda tonight: conditional use, and then a couple of map amendments to plan developments. We'll hear more about each of those petitions coming up. But for those of you who maybe it's your first time here, or it's been a while since you were here, the procedure tonight, especially for the petitioner teams, I want you to know, we, as a commission, always look to city staff first. Demir, in this case, will give us the city's thoughts, go through the city packet, and go through the recommendations. We, as a commission, will take the opportunity to ask questions of him. Then we will call the petitioner team to come on up, and we will ask you at that point in time to tell us your thoughts. And then, again, we'll take the opportunity, as a commission, to ask questions of the team. Following that, we open the petitions up to public comment. So you're here tonight in support or against a petition. That's your opportunity to tell us your thoughts. Following that, we close the public hearing portion of each of these petitions. We look to city staff for any final comments, if they have any. And if not, we, as a commission, deliberate and take a vote. If the petitions are approved, they move forward to city council. There's a couple of dates that will, each of these petitions will have in front of the council. And if you're on the petitioner team, you can work with staff to find those dates. So that's the bulk of the procedures for tonight. First see everyone nodding their heads, so I think we're good to go on running through that. So I appreciate that. Keeps things orderly, and it's a good representation of the City of Elgin. So, following this now, we're on to Item E, which is the administration of the oath for any of you who wish to testify tonight. So if you are going to testify tonight, or even if you think you might, it doesn't hurt to take the oath. If you could please stand and face the court reporter down here. She will administer the oath. I said, "Even if you think you might." Excellent. Appreciate that. All right, at this point in time, then, we will move on to the first petition on our agenda, which is a conditional use at 340 Renner Drive. To my fellow commissioners, you may have noticed my architecture firm has provided documents in the next petition, so I'll need to recuse myself. At this point in time, I'd like the commission to appoint a chairperson pro tem.
I move to appoint Alex Lopez as the chair pro tem.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Abstain.
And Chairman Cox?
Abstain.
The motion is approved by zero and two abstains.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. Just for the record, we do have proof that proper notice was provided for the first petition tonight. This is the application by Janaki Foods as applicant and Nun Dunvan Partners LLC as property owner, who are requesting a conditional use to establish a snacks and sweets food manufacturing facility at the property commonly known as 340 Renner Drive, Unit D. Let's start with the aerial map. Subject property is outlined in yellow. The particular, Unit D, is outlined in red. It is the north end of the building. As you can see, the property's got a purple overlay, so it's Zone GI General Industrial. Property is approximately 6.2 acres in size. It is located in the southwest industrial park, generally located west of McLean Boulevard and south of Route 20. This property is at the southwest corner of South Street and Renner Drive. As you can see, it is improved with a fairly long rectangular building that's approximately 120,000 square feet in area. The Unit D is approximately 30,000 square feet in floor area. The properties to the south and east, both to the east, are same zoning classification, GI General Industrial. Those properties are improved with several light industrial buildings. The property to the south has a green overlay, so that property's Zone PCF Plan, Community Facility District, and is part of the Elgin Community College. The properties to the west are Zone MFR, Multi-Family Residence District. And then those to the north, across South Street, they do not have an overlay color, which means they're unincorporated Kane County. As you can see, those are improved with single-family homes. Here is a bird's eye view of the subject property looking north. As you can see, it's a one-story light industrial building that has access to Renner Drive. In fact, there are five access driveways on the east and one access driveway to South Street on the north. So Janaki Foods is looking to move from Elgro Village to Elgin. They are proposing to establish a food manufacturing facility within the existing space, within Unit D of 340 Renner Drive. Janaki manufactures Indian sweets and snacks, specifically snacks made from rice flour, chickpea spices, and nuts. They make sweets which are made from milk, nuts, and spices, and also Indian pancake-type batter mix that's made from rice and lentils. The floor plan that's indicated on the left here shows, there should be one 15-foot-long continuous fryer, a couple of dough mixers, and some other manufacturing production facility. The applicant has agreed to install the necessary HVA mechanical equipment so that no orders are omitted from the facility. The facility would be open 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Here's a couple photographs of the existing building. The one on top right is the front facade facing Renner Drive, and the one in the lower left indicates sort of the rear of the building where most of the loading docks are located. The company expects deliveries to take place between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM on a daily basis. Most deliveries are done by a company van to wholesale basis to surrounding grocers. Every once in a while, they will have a pickup and delivery by a semi truck for more national deliveries. The entire property is required to provide a total of 123 parking spaces. The site has a total of 161 parking spaces. So with the proposed use, the facility will continue to meet the parking requirement. Proposed conditional use is required to meet the standards for approval. We've provided our overview of the standards in the staff report. We believe that all applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Demir. At this time, does any commissioners have questions? I'll start with Commissioner Valdez.
No, no questions.
Commissioner Carey?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions for me. Thank you, Demir.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to invite any project representatives to come up front. And please state your name and address. Thank you.
Ponkesh Patel from Janaki Ford, 340 Renner Drive, D, Elgin, 60123. Okay. I need to say anything? Well, basically, we are just moving from Elgro to Elgin because we have not enough room to expand. So this is, they have like a 10,000 square feet, and we need a bigger. So that's the reason we're moving in Elgin. And this is something, we making snacks, it's like Indian chips, something like that, and we make a sweet and batter, just like pancake something. And we using the big fryer, like say 15-foot fryer, like, you know, continuous process. And this is something we supply is local and on the yes level, you know? This is something about we providing.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask any commissioners if you have any questions. I'll start with Commissioner Carey.
Where do you retail your products at?
I'm sorry?
Which stores? Where would you, who buys?
Supply?
Yeah.
Okay. This is all the Indian store, like a Patel business. We have wholesale, like a distributor, like a Rajapuri. We have in Texas, we have in California, we have in New Jersey. This all location, we have a distributor. So most of the, around like a 30% of our product supply in the local, of the Patel business and Indian grocery stores.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for choosing Elgin.
Commissioner Valdez?
So you guys are going to be using vans, not trucks, right, for pickups and drop-off of materials?
Yes. We also, local delivery, we use a van. But we ship over to Chicago somewhere, we just use a truck. And this truck come loading, and the raw material comes up, we unloading, that's kind of, you know, in and out.
And how many times a day?
I would say per day, one or two incoming, and one or two outgoing.
No more questions.
I don't have any questions. Thank you so much. You can have a seat.
Okay.
At this point, I'd like to open up for a public comment. Anybody here? I see no comment.
We can close the public hearing.
Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Thank you.
I move to approve petition 13-22, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in our packet.
I second it.
We'll take your call.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cox?
Abstain.
And Chairman Pro Tem Lopez?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero, but one abstention.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll grab the talking stick again here. Appreciate everyone allowing us to make that shift, so we keep everything orderly and give everyone due process. So we will now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is at 1550 North Randall Road, petition 17-22. And look to staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. And again, for the record, we do have proof of proper notice on this one as well.
Thank you.
So the second application is the application by Signs Now as applicant and Elgin Medical Ventures LLC as property owner, who are requesting a map amendment to the P O R I, Planned Office Research Industrial District Ordinance Number G 6307, with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code requirements for the number of permitted wall graphics, to construct three wall graphics and one monument graphic for a new medical facility at the property commonly known as 1550 North Randall Road. And again, we'll start with the overhead map with zoning overlay. Subject property here outlined in the red. It's approximately 5.7 acres in size. It is on the west side of Randall Road, directly across from the Sherman Hospital. It is at the terminus of Fox Lane into Randall Road. The property is Zone P O R I, Planned Office Research Industrial, that was established in 2007. And currently, the medical facility, a medical office building is under construction on the property. That is going to be 49,000 square foot building with 215 parking spaces on site. That facility will be for Ortho Illinois, which is an orthopedic care provider. As you can see, the properties to the northwest and south are all kind of purple colors, so they're all zoned P O R I, Planned Office Research Industrial. To the north is the 7-Eleven gas station. To the west is a 325,000 square foot light industrial and warehouse facility for Discount Tire. And then to the south is the two-story office building that's Zone O R I, Office Research Industrial. And then to the, to the east is the Sherman Hospital Campus Zone, PCF. Here is the bird's eye view of the subject property, again, the medical facility that's under construction for Ortho Illinois. So Ortho Illinois facility will include orthopedic medical care, walk-in injury clinic, physical and occupational therapy, x-ray, MRI, all those services all under one roof. And so Ortho Illinois is requesting approval to be able to install three wall graphics on the new building. This table summarizes all proposed signage on the property. The code allows two wall signs. They're proposing three. The sign of the east elevation is permitted to be 240 square feet. They're proposing 132.7. On the north elevation and the south elevation, the sign, the two signs that are proposed are the same, and I'll show the images shortly. Those two signs can be 480 square feet each, and they're proposing only 80.5 square foot sign on each elevation. And then the site would also have a monument graphic. The code allows a 10-foot-high, 80-square-foot sign on this property along Randall Road. They are proposing an eight-foot sign with 76.6 square feet in area. This is the east elevation of the property facing Randall Road. As you can see, the sign will be on the south end of the building, facing Randall, that would advertise Ortho Illinois, the tenant, as well as their injury walk-in clinic, the service that they will provide. And then these, this is the image of what the sign would look like on the south elevation. This sign for Ortho Illinois is positioned on this, what they call a blade wall. It's a, it's a wall that kind of projects through the facade, and it's the highest point of the building. The intent of these two signs in the north and south elevations is to be visible to the motorists that are traveling along Randall Road. Here is the site plan that sort of highlights where the signs are, indicated in yellow. The monument sign that would be code compliant will be at the, sort of near the entrance into the property. There is no direct access to, from Randall Road. The access to the property will be from the extension of Fox Lane that serves, sort of the access from both 7-Eleven to the north, and then for this, for this facility. The proposal is required to meet the standards for map amendments and for plan developments. We have provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and staff believes that all applicable standards are satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. And I believe the representatives from Signs Now are here and can address the commission.
All right, we'll look forward to a hearing from them in a minute, but first, we'll take the opportunity to ask you questions. Commissioner Lopez, questions for staff?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions. Thank you, Demir.
There was a long pause, but she had no questions. I do not have any questions for you either. Thank you. If you now want to join us up here, petitioner team? All right, as was said, if you could please state your name, spell it, give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts.
Timothy Anderson, T I M A N D E R S O N. I'm from Signs Now, Rockford, Illinois. And we've been working with Ortho Illinois ever since they started. So they're a longtime customer of ours, and we brought up the street on Randall Road. We did the Algonquin. And so what they're asking for here, basically, I think that the Ortho Illinois and that blade sign has to be kind of double-sided, because the traffic that's moving on Randall Road, and this building being set back, like you can see from here's Randall Road, the building's kind of backed from that, it's hard to pick up that you're coming up to it, especially with the gas station and stuff there. So this was better exposure, plus that is the way the architect did want the building, and we didn't realize that you couldn't put the three signs on there. But with the total square foot that is allowed, 960 feet, we're using 294 feet. So I mean, it's not huge by any means, and it covers everything they need to be done. We did eliminate a post, a directional sign, and we have no signage for the service road that is, I think it's called Capital Street. There's no signage on that side, so you'd have to pick it up from the blade sign if you're going on that road to see Ortho Illinois. That's basically it.
All right. Well, that's good information to consider. The commission will take an opportunity to ask you questions. If you want to hold on. Commissioner Jones, questions for the petitioner?
I hesitated, because it was more of an observation, and staff would be able to, staff and applicants would be able to work better together. I just had, and I had spoken to Demir earlier about this, that sometimes these processes to do these map amendments can take up to two months. And so I just wondered if there's any possibility to streamline any of those, or take a look and review those types of ordinances for future applicants. So that was my hesitation, but it looks good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and to that point, they're going to be operational at the end of next month. And so we can't put any signs in that building until, I mean, we don't make signs until we have absolute permits. And I've been in business for 37 years, and I know better than to even start something without the proper permits, and that's what we're expressing. And so the, you know, whatever has to be done here, we understand, and we will follow. But we do need to move quickly as we can on that, as this building's going to be opened up, and people need to be able to read it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And that's where my observation comes, was coming from, that it's a very worthwhile process to go through aesthetically and to keep everything uniform and everything else. But it can be time-consuming. And so I had asked Demir to just kind of review some of those options to make sure if there was any possibilities of streamline that they were taking care of. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
And Commissioner Lopez?
No questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions for you, so appreciate you coming on up.
Okay.
All right, I see city staff moving towards the sign-in sheets. But while we're waiting for that, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on this All right, sign-in sheet is showing only the applicant's name, and I see no one heading up our way, so we'll close the public hearing portion of this petition, and look to staff for any closing comments.
Nothing further to add, just to confirm that, yes, we, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Jones and staff. We'll explore possibilities to, if they're, if it's feasible to provide any kind of amendments to the signed ordinance, to allow for more than two wall graphics for commercial properties that, that do not have direct access to roadways. We've, we've now approved several applications for more than two wall graphics for these sort of outlots and other commercial properties that do not have direct access. So we will certainly take a look at that and see if something can be provided. So, but other than that, there's nothing else to add. Staff believes that the applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore recommends approval subject to conditions.
Okay. With that said, then, the chair will entertain a motion for petition 17-22.
I move to recommend that city council approve petition 17-22, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as findings of the commission. Those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, four to zero.
Great. That'll be our recommendation to city council. Thanks for coming tonight.
So is that the next step that goes to the city council? Can they approve it from there?
All right, we'll go to city council. Whether they approve it, I can't say, but that would be the hope. But work with staff definitely on those dates. Okay, I, I'm giving, being given the nudge here. It's the committee of the whole and then the council. So, but either way...
It is actually city council, two meetings, first for consideration, then the, but I'll communicate with your staff that I've been communicating with, and I'll make sure that you're informed when the meeting is scheduled. So you're welcome.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. All right, we always can learn and improve what we're doing here, right? Moving on to the last petition to be heard this evening is 335 Locust Street, petition 20-22, for the construction of a 9,400-square-foot building addition for a performing arts center.
Okay, final petition tonight. This is the application by Perkins and Will as applicant, and St. Edward Central Catholic High School as property owner, who are requesting a map amendment to the PCF Plan Community Facility District, Ordinance Number G 6707, as it was amended by Ordinance G 1-19, with the departures from the Elgin Municipal Code requirements, to construct a 9,400-square-foot building addition for a performing arts center at St. Edward Central Catholic High School, all at the property commonly known as 335 Locust Street. And again, we'll start with the aerial map, just to kind of orient ourselves. So St. Edward High School campus is generally located in the southwest, near southwest side of the city, to the, let's see if we can use the pointer. So to the east is generally the State Street, and then the Fox River beyond. The downtown is just to the north, or top, top right on the screen. As you can see, the campus is kind of split in two parts. The east side of the campus is the athletic field. That's on the east side of Elm Street. And then the main high school building is on the west side of Elm Street, both south of Locust of Locust Street. It's approximately eight acres in size. The city established a PCF Planned Community Facility District for this back in '07 when the city allowed installation of, of lights for night games at the athletic field. It was later amended in the 19, in 2019 for additional night, night events at the high school field. As you can see, the, all surrounding properties have the same yellow shade, which means they're in the same zoning classification, RC3, Residence Conservation. Most of those properties are improved in single-family homes. Some of those have been converted to multi-units over the, over the years. And then to the northeast of the athletic field is a property that is zone MFR, Multiple Family Residence District, and that property is part of the Housing Authority of Elgin, multi-family buildings. Here is the bird's-eye view of the subject property. Again, high school building on the west side of Elm and then the athletic field on the east side. So, the applicant is proposing to construct 9,400-square-foot addition for a performing arts center. The, the center would be located in the southwest corner of the existing high school building. That area was previously planned for the new gymnasium. Back in 2000, the city approved a plan development for the, the high school improvements that included a phased plan for these, these improvements. Phases one and two have already been completed. Phase one was the, the west addition to the main high school building, which is this part right here, and then the west parking lot, that was approved in 2000 with that establishment of the plan development. Phase two included renovation to the existing science classrooms within the, within the old high school building. And then phase three was going to be a new gymnasium, generally in this area where the theater is proposed now. And then phase four, there's a phase four too, that includes possibly construction of some classrooms on the east side of the building. There are, there are temporary classrooms set up right here on the east side of the building. So, the, the new theater addition would generally be in the same location as that gymnasium that was originally planned, but they're also installing a new, smaller stormwater detention facility to accommodate the new impervious surface associated with the addition. Currently, the performing arts events are held at the gymnasium, which is not adequate for these types of performances, so the applicant is proposing to construct a theater that would be designed specifically for that. These are the floor plans of the addition, on the, on the right is the, you know, first floor plan. The addition would include its own lobby entrance, some restrooms, a dressing room, fixed seating for 280 people, and associated mechanical and electrical support areas. Here are three renderings of the proposed addition. Top left is the main entrance, that will be on the north side of the addition, close to the main entrance to the high school building, off of that west parking lot. The top right is the view from the intersection of Dominican Way and Elm Street, and then the bottom is the view from Perry Street looking north towards that, the theater addition. There will be a service entrance on the, the south end, generally in this area right here, and this, the tallest portion of the, of the addition, both on the north end and on the south end, is approximately 40 feet high. As you can see, the design of the building will include brick masonry on the exterior, the, the brick color would match the color of the existing high school and would complement the existing architecture. As you can see, the applicant is proposing four new wall graphics that would carry the name of the performing arts center across, that will be on the north elevation, and then on the south tower, similarly, the name of the performing arts center, and then the cross, that's one of the few departures that is requested for the part, for the project. Here are the departures, the, the street setback, the addition is close to the south property line along Dominican Way. 27-foot setback is required, only a four-foot setback is proposed. Again, that is consistent with that plan that was previously approved and contemplated for the new gymnasium. Transition yard setback is 55 feet required along that south property line that borders a single-family home. The addition is approximately 23 and a half feet from that south westerly lot line. Similarly, the transition landscape yard, the depth of that, that's required along the transition lot line, 27 feet, the applicant is proposing 23 and a half. Building floor area, overall, the high school is very close to the maximum permitted building floor area right now, which is just over 72,000 square feet. With the addition, they're over 100,000, so 102 and 640. Building lot coverage, they are permitted 54,455, with the addition, they would be at almost 64,000 square feet. And then the number of wall graphics, I mentioned that earlier, the, a school facility, a school building is only allowed one wall graphic. They currently have four wall graphics on the building that simply, simply have a, a name of the high school on the northeast and south elevation, I believe, and they're proposing four new ones for the performing arts center. The application is required to meet the standards for map amendments and plan developments. Our overview of the standards is provided in the packet. Staff finds that all applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in report, and of those, I will mention only one, which is the fact that the school has agreed not to host any events at the performing arts center at the same time as the events are held at either the gymnasium or at the athletic center, to, to make sure that there's adequate parking on the, on site. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question for procedures, we do approve of proper notice for this petition?
We do, apologize, yes, thank you.
No worries, it's a simple, simple thing, just to get on the record. All right, Commissioner Valdez, questions for staff?
I don't have questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thanks.
All right, invite the petitioner team to come on up. And as previously requested, come on, you can get your, your five, five minutes and, oh, I was going to say five minutes of fame in front of the City of Elgin cameras, but again, if you could state your name, give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts.
My name is Steve Turks, that's S-T-E-V-E, Turks, T-U-R-C-K-E-S. Address is, I'm with Perkins and Will Architects, the address is 410 North Michigan Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, it's at Suite 1600, 60611.
My name is Jan Schroeder, I live at 152 Perry Street in Elgin, and my name is spelled
My name is Brian Tecampi, Brian with an I, T-campi, T as in Tom, E-K-A-M-P as in Peter, E, I'm, I guess I have 335 Locust Street at the, at the school.
So, thank you for hearing us tonight. As Demir did a great job presenting the project, this has been a long time coming for the school. They have, for years and years, really since their original campus was constructed, done all of their performances in their gym. It's sort of a traditional thing, that school architecture of the period was sort of a combination gym slash theater, really designed as an athletic space though, much more so than a theater. The theater is, is a bit more of an afterthought stage at the end of the gym. It doesn't have the type of lighting, acoustical control, line sets for the stage and so forth that you would want to see in a modern day, modern day theater. And so, the school has, for a number of years, really wanted to have a dedicated theater space to, to house their performances. And so, this is really the result of that dreaming by the school. As noted, the school has many students who both play sports and are involved in performances, and so, they will, they have, I think, agreed not to have those events happen at the same time. As a result, you'd be making parents choose what they, what they can see and what they can't see in terms of their, and students, make the students choose as well. And I don't know that I have anything else to add, Jan or Brian, if you want to add anything. We're happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, we'll take that opportunity, so we'll start with Commissioner Jones, a few questions for this team.
Yeah, I was thankful to see that you had done some community outreach.
We did.
And have a meeting with the neighbors.
We did.
Because that was my question too, was in regards to parking, but you guys have been there forever, doing this sort of, having a school situation. So, like I said, I was thankful that you had done the community outreach to the neighborhood, and I hope that you'll continue that. There was a couple comments, petitions, and response forms that were sent in, that were, had shared some concerns about the parking, as I'm sure your concerns are too, so, I just hope you'll continue that outreach to the neighborhood.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, to that point, those, they did come up in the meeting, and that's why we sort of made the point that we really don't see the, the demand for parking changing as a result of the addition. It's really, it's essentially shifting venue from one side of the building to the other side of the building.
Well, I think I would hope, and you would probably agree, that the goal would be to increase some enrollment, right, and get some new students and new, new excitement about the campus, right?
Yes, exactly, yep.
Good, I, I hope the same, I hope that happens for you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
I, I do have a, just a couple of questions and maybe more, more comments. So, you've heard of the, you know, if you build it, they will come, and so, everybody likes a new shiny object, right? I think the rendering is beautiful, and, and so, are you, do you, what is your current capacity right now of your, call it a gymatorium?
The current capacity of the gym?
Yeah, for, for a performance.
485.
Forty-five, yeah.
145, and then the, the capacity here is?
Four, 485. Just shy of 500.
Gymnasium is 485.
And this is 200, 280, I think.
Yeah, 280.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
All right, would it be appropriate to read these petitions into record, or will they be, okay?
Okay, if you want.
We can, all right. And the only reason I'm going to hold you up here when I briefly read these is just to make sure if you wanted a chance to respond to these, if you got them or not. So, the first one that's stapled here in no particular order, other than how it's stapled, is "We are against this idea, the school never addresses the traffic and/or parking problems that occur in our small neighborhood. When they expand, it's a 24/7 problem." There's no name, but it is addressed at 125 Elm Street. The next one is two words, "In Favor" by Rich Myers at 207 Elm Street, and it looks like I have two copies of his. And then the third one was, "This project will be a benefit to the neighborhood and the Elgin community. The high school is a welcome anchor to our neighborhood. I've lived at 152 Perry Street since 1981." Janet Schroeder, and so.
I, I work at the school and I've lived in the neighborhood since 1981. My house is at the top of the hill on Dominican Way, the first home, so I've had a lot of experience with the parking and the hill and the problems. And so, I have, you know, met with neighbors several different times to try to find some resolutions, and I will continue to do that.
We appreciate that, just really wanted, especially on the, the first one that had some issues, just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to address that here tonight. If you feel like you've done that, I don't mean to belabor it, but I just really wanted to give you that opportunity. Do you have any thoughts on anything, or do you feel like what you've said is good?
Is that the 125 Elm?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we don't need to get into specifics of a person or things like that, but just generally, if you wanted to.
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out where that's located. Is that directly across from the football field parking lot, 125? I would guess it would be.
Right.
Okay, so, that's a particularly busy area, because we've got the parking lot, and if there's a football game, there's a lot of cars in and out, and there, there are quite a few cars parked on the street there as well. And so, I think it's a particularly busy area.
Yeah, I think it's probably a combination of that, and then during the school day, the students aren't in the student lot, parking along the street. Residents have voiced concerns that, you know, I don't have a place to park, and, you know, feeling that that is their spot to park. So, you know, we try to work with the students and come up with other areas, areas to park, but also with the neighbors as well, that, you know, we understand this is your home, but this is not, you know, your personal parking spot, you know, but try to work with them and work with the students as well to find other places, you know, if someone does call the school, you know, to complain about cars, we try and get the students to move just to, you know, make everyone happy.
Yeah, many times we've had the kids go out and move their cars if they're parked in a spot that a neighbor needs, so.
All right. And I guess Commissioner Jones would like a, an additional chance to, to make a comment, and we'll extend that to the commissioners to my right as well.
Just an observation, my youngest graduated this year from U-46, and we've had the pleasure of six different schools within the district. Parking, driving, drop-off, pickup is a nightmare at every single school they've attended, so I don't know what the solution is. It's just, you just have to always stand tall. Some are better than others. I'm thankful that I don't have to deal with that anymore.
So, the solutions are teleportation or remote learning, but that's beyond our scope, so, Commissioner Lopez, do you have any additional comments, or will you pass?
Well, since I get a chance to, I do have an architectural question, on the exterior view from the main entry, you have, what, it looks like it's, is it, is that a louver or?
At the top, yeah, there are rooftop-mounted air handlers. There's one at this location, and then there's one at the, at the bottom, there you can see in the, in the bottom view, the view from Perry. So, there's sort of tower elements at the, sort of hang on to the corners of the building, and they are, are essentially encapsulating those rooftop air handlers to keep that machinery out of sight to neighbors.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions, no comments, sorry.
Either one, it's your opportunity. I don't have anything additional for you, so appreciate you coming on up.
Thank you.
All right, at this point in time, we will open this petition up to public comments. There's just one gentleman remaining in the audience who looks like he'd be part of the petitioner team. And staff is looking at the signing list, I got the head shake, no. So, I will close the public hearing portion of this petition, and once staff gets back to his seat, give you the opportunity to offer us any final comments.
Nothing further to add, staff recommends approval, subject to conditions.
All right, and at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition 20-22.
I move to approve petition 20-22, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in our packet.
And also to adopt the findings?
And to adopt the findings as fat.
Excellent, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, four to zero.
All right, that'll be our recommendation to City Council, thanks for coming this evening. All right, moving on, other business, any comments, any business from the commission? Hearing none, item H, public comments. There is no one remaining in the council chambers at this point in time who would give us public comments, so we will close that, and look to staff for the summary pending development
Scannell Development at the southwest corner of Randall and Highland is scheduled for City Council consideration this Wednesday. The other items that were on the agenda for, on our special agenda on May 23rd, will be scheduled for the following council meeting on June 22nd. Just a reminder, the, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be on the second Monday in July. That is the July 11th, I believe, because of the Fourth of July holiday, falls on the first Monday. We will have a packed agenda for that one as well, so if there's any questions about any particular item, I'm happy to answer.
There's, petition thirty-eight dash twenty has been on our pending, newer than pending for many, many months. I wondered if there was any update, and I also wondered if there is anything pertaining to plywood on windows and how that, that image looks in the, in the area with any of these, this particular project has been boarded up as well for at least a year.
Yes. I'm, I'm aware of the, the property. So the project, the demolition inside the facility commenced, and so they installed the plywood in the windows for security reasons. They took out the floor, or most of it, between the basement and the first floor. So for safety, they had to install plywood. Now, the construction has been progressing very slow, to say the least. So I, I will have to check with the code enforcement, and I can provide the updates prior or at the next meeting on, on the status of that particular item. But I know that, that certainly, you know, plywood in the windows is not allowed, and it's a code enforcement matter where the, our code enforcement staff works with those homeowners and try to eliminate those as much as possible. It's a little bit difficult when they're installed for construction purposes, and then if they are showing that they're making progress with construction to some extent, then obviously those things can remain. But to what extent the construction is happening inside, I really don't know. But I would agree that it's been too long. And that, that project is essentially renovation of an existing commercial space into a restaurant, which is allowed by right. The reason they're on the agenda here is because part of that restaurant, they were, their intent was to have an event space to hold events. And so other than that, they, you know, it can move forward. That's why they got the permit for some renovation and all that stuff, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions on these items? All right. Last item, item J, adjournments. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved and adjourned.
All right. Have a happy Independence Day. We'll see you the week following.